Yeah, that's another thing. UJS.
Always something.
I know, UJS wants to maybe change.
Does UJS want to change?
UJS, he wants to change the number of.
Oh, UJS.
UJS.
But the UPS.
Germs are cases depending on the severity of the case. Not on germs.
Oh, for the in the pool or in the call?
Interesting.
That's a church.
It was like a wifi hotspot.
No. Sound that cool. It's a good one. It's got a lot of juice in it.
At least it's tough around here, but I made my trip to Canada. And I just. Their license, I shouldn't say that. We've had a little trip to the Canadian waters, you don't realize it, but if you get north of Grand Forks, and I am assuming there's sections of land that are underwater.
We have a couple of little things to go through first.
Okay.
But go ahead, yep, take a chair.
Driving on Interstate twenty-nine, both sides, two sides, driving across.
Jukes.
I mean, there's two, three miles in the direction.
Yeah, there's been flood warnings. We'll see that this weekend when we head north.
The. Red river, the distance of mile.
It's time.
Is it nine?
Nine oh two.
Eight fifty-eight.
Uh, my computer says nine oh two. Oh, what? No, my computer, I don't know why that would be off by four. You're right, my watch says eight fifty-nine, okay. Wow. Yeah. Well, we need to be or leave earlier.
You got all the balance and boxes.
No, not all. It's a work in progress. Time is quickly running out.
Yes, I provided the.
Is that in the package or?
No, I just got this morning. So I just. Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Carrington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. And Michelle, would you like to lead us today?
Oh, I know yours.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Couple items, if anyone has a cell phone, if you had silenced it, if you need to take a call, if you could step out, and also we are streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment. We will still take calls from the public on items that are not on the agenda. The two phone numbers are six oh five eight eight two six two four eight and six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. We will address those during the open part of the meeting. Conflict of interest items, are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two agenda motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Action to approve the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two minutes of the Carrington County Board of Commissioners motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, that motion carries. All right. Item number six, closing audit comments and action to sign the county's letter of representation for said audit.
Hi, my name is Jean. Um, I conducted the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty findings in town of the United States and Atlanta. A few items I have today, I think I provided to Cindy was the management letter. We did not run into any material. Uh, we must go now.
I guess there were three different attachments.
Communication with board of directors.
Okay, I don't think I sent the other thing out then.
There's three attachments, so you just gotta get.
Yeah, sorry.
How about?
Uh, well, on a positive note, there wasn't anything to disclose. Review there. Um, any sort of smaller and material things that might come up were dealt with either the department responsible. Um, we had good feedback. We didn't run into any sort of disagreements. I was able to get all of the information needed, uh, which is with this communication with the board, board of governance, that other item that you just had up prior to this one, um, just sort of states that we did not run into any problems with, uh, getting information or any sort of disagreements with reporting or changes that were necessary.
Is this the management line?
That is the letter of representation. He actually just pulled up the.
Oh, it is there, okay.
Yeah.
It was three attachment, I just had.
Yes, okay, all right, good.
Uh, so in the management letter, this just goes over, uh, items that we discussed if there were any material issues, significant deficiencies in internal control, which we did not, um, have any that we felt needed to be escalated to the management letter. That was very good to all departments that, um, that spoke with, so, um, I don't really think so, this was very clean and it seems to say cautiously, including, um, you know, it was a uniform guidance, which means we would give federal grants. The shares act specifically, and yeah, we think it sounded very well and properly.
Good.
Were there any questions that you guys currently, now that audit is over?
Just this is quite out about the audit, but with this considering all this ARPA funding, any, any, any advice on how to make that easy?
I wish I had something more concrete telling you, you know, Rod Portman, he's our government assistant. I know he has been back and forth with the more national scale like Gatsby, it's some trying to get more concrete information and advice to give. Uh, I know Cindy was just at this workshop, I think things have changed since then, so.
Cause we, yeah, we did, last week, we did the, we took the, the standardized deduction, so to speak, the thing, yeah, the, the law, revenue loss formula, yeah, so.
Yeah. I know it can be a little more complicated when it comes to counties, since cities have more like water, clear guidance on where to go. Um, when I know more, I will certainly forward that information.
Okay, please do.
Yes, of course. And I know what Rod is working through here, so we need to get as much detail of it as quickly as possible. She guys have more guidance, I'm ready to take that. Yeah. Anything audit related?
Sounds good.
Perfect, yeah.
Thank you.
It went very good.
We'll see you in another six years.
Two.
Oh, two?
Yeah. Great work on maybe six.
Just dreaming. What happens if you fall behind?
Uh, well, we just tie marks on, so, yeah, um. Fortunately for here, um, we've had such great luck with, you know.
It's not luck, it's just expertise.
Yes, expertise, there we go. Um, a very skilled team puts this information together, so coming here in order to, it's been worked out very well.
Good, thank you.
Being on this one. Um, I also sent over the letter of representation that I think Cindy printed out.
Nope, I think it's, um, it's, um, it's on this.
It's still on the.
It's on here also.
Oh, in the scroll, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so the management letter, I guess that there was nothing to disclose that was escalated to your guys' office.
No, here it is, a separate attachment. It's letter of representation.
Yes, yes.
Okay, let me hold on, let me stop.
I forgot.
So the letter of representation, basically, uh, we have the board chair sign it and then also Cindy, it's more for, I guess, your guys' liability stating that everything that was prepared, that I looked at as, you know, management's responsibility essentially. And, uh, so you guys sign that and I, that's the only thing I would need for you.
So I'm on the right.
You are just.
So we need a motion.
Need a motion.
We need a motion to do it.
We'll make the motion.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favors.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, any opposed? That motion carries. All right.
Good job to Cindy and her staff as well for their hard work and making sure that this audit went smoothly, so.
Yes. Appreciate that. As good as they go, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do you need, just give me an original, can I email it to you?
You can email it to me, that's fine.
Yep, I will do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
You as well. All right, let's move on then to monthly reports with sheriff. Morning, Brad.
Brad.
Heard you and Matt on the radio yesterday, good job.
Yeah. Do the monthly, uh, monthly radio show.
There we go. All right. You know, for everybody there, we'll get started with the monthly balance sheet for the month of April. And, uh, end of April, the monthly balance sheet was eight thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. If you look, see, we collected sixteen dollars in copy fees, seven thousand six hundred forty-two dollars in sheriff's fees and three hundred twenty-five dollars in warrant fees for grand total of seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Back to our total of three eighty-nine fifty. Yeah. Next page there. So, activity from the jail and the sheriff's office here, you'll see, Lee's got it pulled up on the screen. On the top there, cases and calls for service for the month of April, the sheriff's office responded to five hundred and fourteen cases and calls for service. There's fourteen accident reports completed, eighty-six warrants served, one hundred forty-nine civil papers served and three thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight transport miles for the month of April. You scroll on down to the middle there, you'll see some jail activity for the month of April. Our average daily population was seventy point five seven. Uh, we had seventy-seven, it was our highest ADP, and that was on the sixteenth. Our low was sixty-four on the third. Uh, we had twenty-two people on the scram bracelet, eight people on remote breath, twenty-eight people on the twice daily PBTs, thirty-seven people on the twice weekly UAs and zero people on the sweat patch for a grand total of ninety-five people on the twenty-four-seven program.
Not using that sweat patch so much anymore.
It, they'd something they try to stay away from just because of the complications that you can do with wearing it, taking it off and sending it in and.
It's not a fast way to get the information.
And it's not a fast way of getting information, so.
Is, on the, just a, on the remote breath versus the, the twice daily PBT, is that, what, is it more expensive for the, for the defendant to, to pay for the remote breath? Is that the big difference?
It is, it's more expensive to be in remote breath. Uh, it was at five dollars a day for the remote breath and six dollars for the scram bracelet. Uh, the PBTs, it's a dollar per PBT, and there's a thirty-dollar program fee, so.
Okay.
Uh, Brad, just a, just a comment. I mean, it doesn't bother me, but you know, like, when we come to the, a board meeting on Tuesday mornings, there's always someone, right when you come in, the security there with a box full of collection cups and, and it, it, isn't that kind of a little bit inconvenient to have to use the facilities here? You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It, it, for, I know what's going on, but people that don't know what's going on, I, I think that they probably would stop and say, do I have to go through this too?
Yeah.
You know, I'm thinking about.
What, what Myron's talking about here, that's the, uh, clients that are on probation.
Yeah.
They're coming in and they're checking in with the probation officer in the morning. And, um, I know they have a kind of a program there where you have a certain number, and if your number is drawn that day, you have to come in and check in within twenty, thirty minutes or something like that. So, uh, they come down and use the public restrooms and they'll take a sample of urine from them and, um, send it off, so. That's kind of what Myron's talking about, so.
That's what I'm talking about.
If they had a different facility for that, that'd be nice, but this is the facility we have, so.
It works, I guess.
It works, so.
And, and general public don't have to go through that process to get into the boardhouse, so.
Yep, the, the general public doesn't have to go through that, so. If you scroll on down a little bit more there, you'll see on the bottom, we collected thirteen thousand twenty-five dollars of out-of-county contracts, three thousand nine hundred eighty dollars in work release fees, six thousand ninety-six dollars in twenty-four-seven fees and three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars in scram fees that were collected. There's any questions on that? I'm gonna just touch base a little bit on commissary. We've got our commissary up and going, we're still kind of in the learning, training stages at the sheriff's office with that, but we've had it up for about two weeks now, and let's see, the county does earn a little bit, thirty percent off that for commission, and our commission for the past two weeks was one thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars the county did earn on that. There's a lot of different items that they can get on this commissary from clothing to candy to ramen noodles or whatever to kind of fill that void that they may, may feel they need. So, that's kind of been a interesting learning curve for us to get up and going, but the county not having it for twenty-plus years, so.
Say clothing?
Um, clothing, yes, um, long john shirts, t-shirts, shower shoes. Some people like to have a different pair of shoes than what we provide them for taking showers. Those actually seem to be a high sales thing. Actually, you can get deodorant and soaps and everything, so if you don't like what's provided by the, the company, you can buy your own soaps and different deodorants, so seems to be a, a good thing there, so.
Nice.
Another thing that's been actually kind of really good on this is, um, we're still working on setting up the program, there's so, so much that can, this program can do. We were able to collect seven or eight hundred dollars in past fees and fines on the twenty-four-seven program, and some of that from some of our inmates saying, well, we have to take care of these fees and fines before we can start spending our money on commissary. There was a couple that were willing to pay that up immediately just to be able to buy a candy bar or buy their shower shoes, so that seems to be working, working good on that end, so.
Little incentive.
Little incentive, and like, say, as we, as we grow and get it more inputted into the system here, uh, learn about it, see some good things coming.
I know what people might not be aware of, I mean, when we were looking at some jails and looking at what we need to do to our jail a few years ago, oh, I think everyone we toured had a commissary, it had the same kind of system, it's not like a, like a store, there's not like a storeroom or something like that, but it's.
Yeah, it's, um, like, say, we might go to conferences or trainings, you'll talk to other sheriffs and talk to other agencies and they'll say, what do you guys, how do you guys do commissary? Well, we haven't, we never have, as long as I can remember, and they're, how do you get by? So we were probably one of, one of the few in the nation, I'm sure there's more than that, but that weren't doing commissaries, so it's something, big leap and big change of things here, seems to be going good. One of the bonuses is, could be used as a disciplinary tool, so if we have a, we have an older facility, so you don't have a lot of rooms for people, so if we're having an issue, Troy and I, we can, uh, have a fight, both of our commissaries can get taken away for a given period of time or something like that.
Do you remove their articles that they already paid for too, then?
Those are things that we're all still going through, we have policy in place, and those are things that we're working on, yep.
Civil forfeiture, you gotta go through the process.
So. I know the, the amounts are, on our end, probably won't stay around that fourteen twenty-six for a couple of weeks, the first couple of weeks, everybody's gonna violate stuff, but it's been a good, good program and, uh, so next month, you'll start to see the balance sheet on that because it started here in May, so.
It's money that wasn't being collected before.
Yep.
So it's good, good job.
All right.
Like it.
You have anything else for your report or you're done with that? We have several things on the.
I know there's a few other things on the agenda here.
Move on?
Yep.
All right. Item number eight, then, action to approve the hiring of a deputy sheriff to fill a vacancy.
Well, we had a, another deputy leave, uh, due to scheduling and, uh, family time and whatnot, uh, so, uh, we have an opening for, for deputy.
Make a motion to approve.
Send it.
To my Van Duzen, second by Johnson, this is a full-time.
Position.
Yep.
Full-time position.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, that motion carries. Item number nine, action to approve a budgeted flooring project in the detention center.
Uh, we did budget for a little flooring project in the detention center. We still have some tiles that are, uh, on the floor in the new part of the jail and also in women's one. Women's one is getting put on hold right now because they have found that they have asbestos in the tile, so we can't have our staff, and there's gonna be an extra processing expense to remove those, so that's being put on hold right now. Right now, we are going to work on doing the new hall that was tested and that does not have asbestos. We're gonna remove the twelve by twelve tiles on the floor and we're gonna polish the concrete. Most of the whole other jail has been done over the years with that, that's just a safety concern, these tiles get loose and then they, yeah, inmates get creative and can make.
Weapons.
Weapons and shivs and knives.
So this is the part of the jail that goes from the, the Sallyport into the.
This is the part that was, uh, built in nineteen ninety-eight, the Sallyport, and they called the juvenile hallway.
So is it this, this, um, proposal that you gave me?
It is.
That, this is, this is the one we are going to do.
This is the one we are going to do, it's eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So, I'll make a motion, make a motion to approve this.
Second by Gable, second by Waterman. Any other comments, questions?
Just, this is a budgeted item, this is a budgeted item, yes.
We ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, that motion carries. Uh, item number ten, action to approve an agreement to house Grant County inmates.
This is the same as all the other contracts, we're just getting this one in now, a little late, so.
Make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Also my Gable, second by Van Duzen. Any comments, questions? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. All right, I think we're good.
So.
Thanks, Brad. All right, item number eleven, action to approve advertising and hiring of a deputy state's attorney to fill a vacancy.
All right.
Good morning.
Morning, Becky.
Good morning. Um, I'm here, um, Allison Bakken, who's been our deputy state's attorney for, um, the last eighteen months, um, has decided to explore possibilities in the private sector, and so, um, she will be done working for us, um, the end of June, the twenty-fourth will be her last day. So I am requesting permission to advertise for the second deputy position. We do have the first deputy position that's been open for a while, um, that a candidate, um, has been offered the position, she's in a clerkship, so she anticipates starting, um, the end of July, there's a possibility we might get her here a little sooner, um, but it just depends on a couple of things with her clerkship, so.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any other comments, questions? Hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries.
And just so everyone's aware, too, uh, the attorney general's office, I've spoken with them, and they, um, are gonna do what they can do, um, send some staff out to help during the month of July, um, that either someone will come from here, Aberdeen or Sioux Falls, um, attorneys with their office, talked with all of them, and they are going to come help, Wednesdays are difficult days for us, so they're aware and they're gonna do everything they can, so.
Good.
We'll be good.
So just, yeah, so people are aware, I mean, we're talking, like, the case loads in the thousands, so, for, per year, so this is really important, so we appreciate their assistance.
No, they will not be charging us if we just.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Very good.
Get it filled. I know.
Thank you, thanks, Becky.
All right, item number twelve, action to approve a malt beverage renewal application for Joy Ranch.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Nobody's here, Cindy's.
Uh, this one kind of was, flew under my radar because it is so new, and they were a little bit late getting paperwork to me, so it should have been included with those last Tuesdays, the same thing, malt beverage, we keep a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty goes to the state, so. And in fact, I just got the last of our, um, the ones we approved last week, I just got the last one in yesterday, so I can now send everything to the state.
All right.
Who was the motion?
I did.
Johnson, second by Waterman.
Okay.
All right, all ready? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. All right, item number thirteen, action to approve a resolution declaring a disaster and asking the governor to declare disaster for Carrington County. Sherry, would you like to come up and explain that to us, please? Morning, Sherry.
Morning.
Morning, Sherry.
Morning. So the storm that went through on May twelfth, um, there was a confirmed tornado that hit up by the casino in that area on one sixty-fourth, and after talking with the local agencies, the city of Watertown, municipal utilities, East River Electric, that kind of stuff, yeah, we have enough damage, and talking with the state and stuff, the state as a whole has to meet one point four million, and I talked to my regional coordinator yesterday, and he said, yes, the state has, will meet that. So Carrington as a whole has to meet a little over a hundred and eleven thousand to be able to be included in that, and then each individual agency has to meet a thirty-three hundred dollar.
And this is to open up scheme of.
Yes, correct. Um, so, and after talking to the agencies and getting a few emails, then Carrington has met that hundred and eleven, so I'm just asking, and this is the paperwork in order for them, we have to declare a disaster, you guys have to, in order for the other agencies to apply for disaster assistance.
I'd love to approve, get the paperwork going, what we need to do.
Bring a resolution, so.
Yeah.
Motion by Johnson.
I'll second.
Second by Gable. Now, once we do this, there's a timeline.
Um, so I have to have the initial paperwork turned into the state by Friday, and a lot of them have already started sending it in, I've talked to Rick and I've talked to Steve, they're supposed to get their paperwork to me this week, so I can get that all filled out if Carrington, if our individual agency meets that thirty-three hundred, which we probably will, so.
Nice, good.
Where did you say the tornado was in?
Um, it actually touched down on one sixty-fourth, just west of the casino, there was a house that was.
Oh, okay, the yellow house in the corner on one sixty-one.
Yep.
Charlie, in your packet, is a list of the tornadoes.
Yep, we actually, um, weather service, our weather, Aberdeen Weather Service, um, confirmed seven tornadoes through that storm system, ours wasn't EF one, um, Castle wasn't EF two.
Yeah, I, I, the guy who was out there, our former emergency management director in present, and was out there that night, yeah.
Yep.
Good job.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Johnson and Gable, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Sherry. Okay, um, we'll move on then to item number fourteen, action to approve a notice to bidders for full-depth reclamation and paving on County Road nine B, one mile and twenty-three five, one mile.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Waylon.
How's everybody today?
Good, thanks. How about you?
Yeah, very good, thank you.
We'll just have you state your name, just for the record.
Sure, yeah, Waylon Blazias. Um, so, I believe that the advertisement was included in your guys' packets, but.
Nope, it was not.
Sorry, I had an issue.
Well.
It's on the screen.
Is part of fourteen on the agenda. It's all one.
Okay, so it's all one.
So this is actually fourteen to fifty all at once.
On the screen, it does, it does indicate reclamation and micro seal on that.
Alright, Waylon. Let you explain.
Sure, so, um, I guess Rich, Rick had approached us about looking into some full depth reclamation and stabilizing of a couple, two miles of county road and then six miles of micro sealing. The, the full depth reclamation and stabilizing is the exact same process that we used actually on all the all roads that were reconstructed last summer. And I think everybody was pretty comfortable with how that process worked, so there were a couple of areas of need throughout the county that, uh, that we thought we would continue that process on. So, um, the roads included, this is actually four different sections of road. And the, the county highway numbers are six A, nine B, seventeen and twenty three. Nine B is in front of the Watertown school bus garage. Um, and so that one mile stretch would be reclaimed and that's repaved. And all the associated work, I guess, with that. Uh, and then County Road twenty three for one mile, just, uh, from Highway two twelve to the north, so that's west of town here.
So being right by Tinker Town, going north.
So, so there's one mile stretch there as well. And then County Road six A, which is from Horseshoe Lake east to, um, Highway twenty and then County Road seventeen for three miles from Highway twenty north, so that's just North Lake, that's there. Those six miles, um, Rick had visited Lincoln County, I believe. They had done some micro sealing and it's, I, I won't say it's a new technology, because I don't think it's super new, but it's maybe newer to South Dakota. But I think that they've expressed that they've had good luck with it thus far. Rick really liked the, the results, so. So we're gonna look at doing that on those six miles. It's a, a longer term solution than like a chip seal, but a shorter term solution than an overlay. Um, and the cost of it kind of falls right in between those two as well. But, uh, it, it seems to, after taking a look at the roads and assessing their conditions, that it appears to be to, to fit well as a, as a restoration effort on those roads or a rehab effort to get them back to a condition that the county can continue schedule preventive maintenance.
In a very short explanation, what, what's involved in a micro seal?
So, so it's, it's an oil with just a little bit larger of a rock and, uh, and you put it on in two passes. So it's kind of like an overlay in a sense that you have a leveling course that gets you to a, a plain and level field cross section across the road. And then a second course, about three eighths of an inch thick, that provides that, that little bit of structure, because the aggregates are larger. But again, it's not, it, so the, the total thickness is, is three quarters of an inch to, you know, it can even get upwards of an inch in some of the ruts if you have large wheel ruts. But, uh, so it's about half of the thickness again of a, of an overlay, but, uh, more than just the sealing properties of a chip seal, provides a little bit of that.
It's a slurry type that they put down where, where you chip seal, you just spray oil on and you come up with rock. This is a slurry that they drag to fill up the, the grooves and stuff and help with the wheel tracks. Because the County Road seventeen, the road is actually in good shape, but every crack, there's a bump. And that's a good bump, so we're gonna try and smooth that out. So just kind of self-help.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah. And right, I guess like Rick said, uh, so on a chip seal, you spray the oil and you distribute the rock on top of that. Um, a, a micro seal, if the components are mixed together at, just like an asphalt mix would be and then installed. So that's where it's, uh, the, the micro part is more so like micro aggregates in association with an asphalt lift, but the seal part is because it's more of the, the oil has more properties of a chip seal, sealant. It's kind of a combination of both. Again, it's, it's something that's becoming more common here or, or more areas are, are starting to use it because there's been some on the ground for longer periods of time now in neighboring states that has performed well or at least performed up to expectations.
You have the equipment to do that, take it, that doesn't take specialty equipment.
It's specialty equipment. We don't, we don't do that ourselves. It'll, that's why we're letting us go to bids, so. I'll make a motion to approve this ad for bid.
Alright, motion by Gable. Second by Johnson. So we're doing two full reclamations and then three miles of micro seal.
Yeah, so one thing I do want to note is that, um, obviously, everyone is probably well aware of the cost increases of every material that goes into the road building process. And asphalt itself is no exception, and so, um, we are looking at bidding it with a, with a bid alternative for, um, for the mile of, of Highway twenty three off of two twelve there, that, uh, it would either be paved this year, so the preparation work and the reclaiming and stabilization would be done this year, and then it would either be paved with asphalt, or if that cost comes, you know, beyond what Rick's budget would allow, they would prime quote it with a, with a chip seal essentially on top of that and, and look to pave it then next year, budget of that, the baby. And quite honestly, it's because this, the asphalt prices are, are forty percent probably higher than what he would typically have gotten on a regular year for going squandered.
Can't be as lucky to get it, but we did last fall on the, on the big project, so. And there's two miles of what reclamation and there's six miles of. There's two different roads, three on one or three on gather.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, that motion carries. Now, item number sixteen, discussion regarding funds to be returned to Next Era.
So, uh, this was a, and I don't know if this one was included or not either. But I was, we did have it up on the screen there just a minute ago.
I did. Oh, I had the right thing. Oh, that was.
You had the advertisement on one of them.
Okay, there it is, sorry.
So this is a memo that I prepared to send on to the county's contact with Next Era Energy Resources um, in an effort to close out, I guess, the road restoration agreement with Next Era that, that the county entered into last June, which stated that Next Era would fund a project up to the eleven million four hundred eighty four thousand four hundred seventy five dollars and the county would return any excess funds from that. There are still a few outstanding items that, uh, that are to be completed on that project, but, uh, we were able to assign values to those in order to come up with, with this return dollar figure, so. I'll just run through the, the schedule of numbers here, the schedule of values. So the contract paid to the general contractor, the project was eight million, eleven thousand eight hundred fifty two dollars and thirty nine cents. There's a little bit of outstanding work to be completed in twenty twenty two, so, um, temperature limitations restricted the contractor be able to complete chip sealing work, and so, uh, we utilized the bid prices. Um, and then Rick, I, I had Rick break down his cost to chip seal six miles of roadway. Um, and he stated that it would cover the county's costs to do it. Themselves, they do have chip sealing to do in the area, actually, I think even on a mile of road that it attaches to it. And so it actually would be a good time to do the chip sealing, because then they'll all be back on the same schedule again. So, uh, there's that, there's some seeding, uh, that needs to be wrapped up this spring. And then, uh, any associated, I guess, engineering costs with closing this thing out are included in that two hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. The outstanding invoices have to be reimbursed to the county, uh, that is in the road use agreement with, between the county and, and the developer, the developer had, had obligated themselves to cover all costs incurred by the county. And the county has, uh, a substantial amount of outstanding invoices that have not been reimbursed, and so that, I, I guess, between Rick and myself, our thoughts were that we would just retain that from that, um, eleven million dollars that was originally appropriate for the project. And then what that gets us to is a total cost incurred by the county of eight, eight million five hundred fifty one thousand one hundred fifty six dollars and seven cents, and so the balance being returned to Next Era. So I guess I'm just looking for the commission's approval to, uh, have myself and Brenda sign off on this and send it to Next Era, um, to get that processed.
We don't have, we just have discussion.
That's what Rick said.
So I, I don't know how you can prove this if the numbers.
We don't even have it as a.
It's not, there's nothing on here but discussion today.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll put it back on. We'll put it back on when we get those details figured out.
What, what's that? What are we gonna return? I, I'm kind of at a dis.
Well, I guess I'm not sure when we're returning money when the work is not done.
Yeah, and that was another discussion that bins, it's not completely done. The money returned, so.
Sure, so the, the dollars are all accounted for in the outstanding work to be completed.
We're just trying to come up with the.
Are they, are they starting to question or ask or wire?
They, for about six months, they've been asking me when they're gonna.
Well, I would think, once we get that chip sealing done, in case we have something falling on that or a receipt, I mean, any of it, there could be increased costs with everything.
Yeah, hopefully in the next three weeks, we'll have the chip sealing done in that area.
Guaranteed prices, what if something goes wrong? What if, what if, what if?
Sure, yeah, so I would say that, um, because that chip seal was bid at that price. Right, either, I, and either the county and or the contractor would complete the work for that price. You know, there, there wouldn't be an associated change order, I guess, as far as the cost of the chip.
Not arguing with you, but a couple of years ago, we had a deal with Culver, and we had a contract to just sit here, keep it.
Sure.
This is what it's gonna cost you, like it or not.
Sure. No, completely understandable, I guess, uh.
I'm not saying that would happen in this case, but we have an ace in the hole.
Sure.
Is there a date that that money has to be returned?
Well, so there is a date in the road use agreement that it will be complete within twelve months of the issuance of the final restoration recommendations, which was February of twenty twenty one. So technically, February of twenty twenty two would have been the twelve months, which they wouldn't have been expecting, um, return on that. Yeah, so. I think, uh, both parties are obviously trying to work together on, county worked with them in order to get, uh, restoration efforts in place and get something off the door. And I, I don't know that they would be looking to take any action if they don't get any money returned tomorrow. But again, uh, they, they have, uh, asked about it monthly, because they do provide monthly reports to the DUC, um, until they close out this road use.
So none of us would not want that money back.
Right?
No, I'm sure.
Well, Rick thinks that maybe we can just ask him if they just wanna donate directly.
Future projects.
I, I guess I could put that in there too.
Living on the restoration road, a restoration road last, basically, I'll say last winter, when they seeded the shoulders and then they come by and they put the straw over the top of it, I thought, this isn't gonna work. And then the straw ended up in North Dakota with a little breeze and low behold, I was out there the other day and it, it's growing.
Sure.
I, I couldn't believe it. It's just like patting the grass on a gravel road and it, it's actually growing.
Sure.
So there's, there's, uh, the Lord is looking out for somebody here.
Sure, yeah, you know, I, I, I get what you're saying. You'd think drilling straw would help that seed hold and stay in place and all, but I think it's actually the second, the second, um, effort of the drill by, by punching that straw and that's, is what helps compact that ground a little bit more.
And I'm pretty sure there is some in North Dakota.
So this needs to be brought back?
We'll have Waylon and Cindy talk about the discrepancy and then, um, see when we can get it back on again for.
Get it done as soon as we can here.
Yeah, and like I said, the chip seal, hopefully within the next three weeks, we'll have that done.
Yeah.
Who's doing that one?
The town. We are.
We're doing our chips.
So they'll essentially be paying the, the bid price that was on the project, would pay the county to counties, the county subcontract.
Cause like Waylon said, we've got two miles on the end of it that we have to do any out, so we'll be right there to do it.
Think that's it then. Alright, thank you.
Cindy, I do also have to you what days, uh, newspapers, newspapers advert, would be advertising.
The notes starts? Yeah, I will have to. I don't think we can get it in South Shore.
No, I don't think we want it.
Okay.
Alright, item number seventeen, action to approve lease agreements for welfare office space.
Good morning.
Morning, Sarah.
Here is an updated form from last week. You should have the contacts in there. Thank you for having me back. I, I'm not gonna review everything we talked about last week. That was a pretty extensive discussion, but I just wanted to update on where we are from last week. Um, we did go back to Crestone regarding the, um, concerns for the, what we had to pay. Crestone has agreed to cover all of the costs for the electrical work and they are actually working on it. Um, we had stopped in last week and they were working on completing that, so which was good to see. So that cost, the upgrades for the electrical and the, um, ethernet for, to make the office functional, that cost to us is zero and, um, is not a concern for us now. The other cost that we needed to find out was the insurance coverage. We have been in communication with the SDP AA and they had said they're, they are able to meet the requirements for Crestone's lease agreement with no additional cost to the county for any of that piece as well. The one other, um, quote that I was waiting on was the quote for the security and that came in higher than I expected it to based on what he had given us verbally. And so that would be my only kind of questionable is, is that essential for our office? Our staff have talked about it and all this quote is, is for two panic buttons in the office. We're not gonna have a camera or anything like that. It would just be the two panic buttons that would go to the security service to notify nine one one. With all of the technology improvements with cell phones and things like that that we have on us. We're not.
Could be done at a later date, I guess, and we could have more time to look into other options.
It's probably quicker just to dial nine one one than it is to go through an alarm company anymore.
Yeah, that's kind of where we were at too.
So the, like, electrical work is meant to accommodate this as well?
Yeah, so this, this would be, well, so the quote in here is for the installation of their panel.
Right.
And so that, but the wiring that's in the, in the building would accommodate it, yes.
Now, this is for a three-year contract. Even as we look around this room and things change constantly. Are we gonna overbuild a little electrical in there or is it gonna be bare minimum? You know, as things change, we require more electrical usage. I was just thinking about that when I saw the cord running up the wall.
Yeah.
And outlets, because we, we do have a little bit of a, a voltage problem now.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a fair question. We did have, um, connecting point went over and they doubled what, what outlets we would need for ethernet. So as far as the electrical, I don't know that, I mean, that, those, there's two outlets in each office and so I think that's adequate. They, they put two ethernet docks in each op, uh, office as well, so hopefully that would allow for growth. But that. Yeah, they wanted to make sure they had one just for the phone system.
Well, you know, some of this stuff is very sensitive to spikes and decline. They're just a question.
Well, I, you know, I was, I was one that had some questions about the costs associated with the electrical panel work and the light switches and stuff, and I think you could address that, so I would make a motion to approve this contract.
I would also add, I contacted ICAP to see if they would be willing to, since Hunter is half county, half ICAP, but they would also chip in for the rent and they have agreed to do that, so. They figured it on a percentage basis and.
What percentage do they agree to kick in?
Well, they're gonna do, okay.
They, it's, I do have it here. They're gonna do a hundred, it's, it boils down to they agree to a hundred dollars a month. One hundred dollars a month.
Hundred dollars a month?
For, for her. And the way they figured that was based on a calculation, based on the office space, the cost of the rent and then that Hunter's time is fifty percent county and fifty percent ICAP. And so they took all of those factors into consideration.
As a square footage of the office that she's going with.
Let's see. I can, do you want me to list out what they said? Yeah, so it's the office square footage. Her office itself is seventy square feet and then common areas, four people are in the space. Hunter's twenty hours a week for the county and twenty hours for ICAP, so fifty percent of her time is county duties. And then, so four, seven hundred and seventy five divided by the four spaces is one ninety three per month. Um, and so fifty percent of the time is county, ICAP share would be ninety six eighty eight, and they would be willing to pay the rent of a hundred dollars a month.
So, go, go ahead. I was just gonna ask, is that gonna be a separate agreement or?
Yes, they'll be taking a look at that, Eric said.
Yes, yeah, but so it was, I think that was a good discussion that they, I mean, previously they had been paying zero and now they're willing to contribute for that rent, for her cost. And now they're willing to contribute for that rent, for her cost.
So our base rent, when we're done, will be how much a month with full utilities?
So utilities are included, so the first year it's seven seventy-five a month. And then the second year, it's, it goes up to one thousand sixty-seven.
One thousand sixty-seven, so it will be nine hundred and sixty-seven.
Yeah, and then also the other piece that I should have mentioned is the community health worker grant will cover Nicole's portion of it, which is approximately, um, two hundred dollars a month, a hundred and ninety-four a month. So that we can bill the grant for one thousand three hundred and sixty. So those combined is around two thousand dollars a month or a year for the, the rest of this fiscal year.
So for the one person they're willing to kick in two hundred dollars a month, correct?
For the grant purposes.
Grant purposes, but ICAP is willing to, basically this would take the same space.
Yeah, but, so what ICAP figured is that half of Hunter's time is considered county time. The grant is willing to cover, um, Nicole's portion of it for this year.
The time that she's there.
Yeah, cause she's full-time.
She's full-time for the grant.
So, and that's, that's already in the grant, we just used that money for.
Right, right.
One is worth two hundred and the other one's worth hundred, but they're only, they're occupying the same amount of space for the same amount of time.
Yeah, it's based on their job responsibilities.
No, they're not, because Hunter is only part-time county. She's only, she got, she's not full-time.
Yeah, yeah. I was glad to get some contribution from ICAP. It's an improvement from where they were.
All right.
Yeah, and we appreciate the partnership. That partnership is invaluable to the work our office is doing, so we're very grateful to have Hunter with us.
I've made a motion, I think.
Yep, we got a motion and a second. We're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
All right.
Uh, now we got eighteen, action near VAST, action to approve a new phone system for the welfare through VAST.
Sarah, do you want to talk about the, the VAST?
I'm so excited.
Um, I should, I should note, our move-in date is June first, and so we're excited to make that happen. We'll work on getting some information out so people know where to find us.
Wait to come tour the new office.
I know, we're excited for it. Thank you. Yes, so now the, the VAST, which is associated, it, this, so the VAST contract is an inevitable thing. Because in, as of September, it was going to change regardless. Um, but we are just moving it since, to coordinate with our, moving the office. It makes sense to do it all at once. I have talked to Steve. I know he's looked into other, um, providers for other departments. However, our internet is through VAST and all of our services have previously been through VAST, so he recommended that our office go through VAST.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Johnson. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries as well.
All right, thank you, thank you.
All right, item number nineteen, discussion, possible action to agree to request and end public defender contracts. Lee, do you want to lead this?
Yeah, I can start explaining that. So, um, we just, when, uh, when the state's attorney was up there talking about the need to hire another lawyer, um, in her office, uh, that's, a lot of this is driven by the caseload, so, um, we need to update our public defender contract. Um, because it's designed to basically give as many cases as possible to one law firm, which is not answering the needs of the caseload. So we, it doesn't account for the factor that sometimes you have to be able to spread that workload out among law firms. And so, um, what this would allow us to do, so, so both the primary and the secondary, uh, public defender, uh, law, law firms want. So the primary is, is, uh, Terry Sutton and the, uh, the secondary is, is Mr. Cummings. Um, they've both requested to end their contract, and we've been talking about this with them because we're looking at ways to, to manage that caseload. And so they've requested to terminate those contracts early, um, to give people an idea. So right now, um, Sutton's law office has about four hundred and fifty cases outstanding, so that's a quite a, that's quite a load. So to give people ideas, so, but because of the way the contract is written, currently, we can't really spread that workload out among other law firms. So it's designed to basically give it, give everything that you can to that one law firm, but that's just not gonna work, um, you know, for the, for the swift, um, you know, dispensing of justice, I guess, and for a speedy process. And, uh, so they've, they're asking terminate, to terminate that. I'm gonna make the motion that we agree to that in both cases, both for the primary and the secondary. Now, what would happen is until we can get a new kind of system in place, we're gonna be going, using a court-appointed attorney method. So that's gonna, by terminating this, we're gonna allow the judges to give new cases to other attorneys. So that, so that the, uh, especially, um, Sutton's office has a chance to work on those cases as opposed to just keeping on, continuing to pile on. So, um, I make a motion that we agree to this. Um, you can see there's a draft letter in front of you that, um.
I need a specific motion, not just agree to this.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah, I make a motion to, to agree to their request to end the public defender contracts.
Both of them?
Both of them.
Effective.
It, okay, that will be effective May thirty-first, so, let through May thirty-first. So they would, they would be, uh, so the way, and just, just so everybody understands how the billing is gonna work. So they're still, they still have to get us some, some bills, especially for expenses, um, for work done prior to May thirty-first. So, um, suggesting that we give them a couple of months to take care of that. So they can give us any, any bills for, for the work that's done under the current contract and then stuff that's done under, you know, after that, after the termination contract. So from June first onward would be how we probably, would be covered with the, uh, the court-appointed attorney rate. And that's specified, just so people know, that's specified at the state level by the unified judicial, judicial system. So, now, that's gonna, that's gonna, in the meantime, that's gonna raise costs a little bit. But it's something we have to deal with because the caseload is getting, is getting, is just too high. Then the next, the next step we're gonna take is to try to redesign that public defender contract to where we, where it allows, we're spreading the caseload out among, among lawyers.
So there'd be a pool of lawyers.
Right. Yeah, that's the.
Add a certain, um, cost.
Yeah, and so.
Contacted amount.
Yeah, so that's, it's still kind of a, it's still a, you know, it's a, it's a cost-saving, anything we can do with public defender contract that does save the, the county some money. Understandably though, um, you know, you don't wanna muzzle the ox, so to speak. So for the more difficult cases, you'd still wanna be paying that court-appointed attorney rate, so.
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen, any comments or questions on this?
So just to clarify, just what I, you know, so this, we're talking about terminating effective the end of May. And then.
May thirty-first.
May thirty-first, yeah, so, so then, and, and stuff, giving, giving, uh, these firms a couple of months to catch up on the billing for, for that. And for the stuff that was done before the end of May and then stuff that's done, you know, work that's done or services that are provided or expenses that are incurred after the Ju, June first and after. That will be covered at the court-appointed attorney rate.
So you, you're, you're saying, oh, that you're willing to give them two months?
Yeah, because that, that allows, because what, well, I think that, that, given the caseload, especially that, you know, when you're talking about four hundred and fifty cases, given that, you know, I think, I think that's reasonable for two months, yeah.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. All right, item number twenty, action to approve claims for payment.
Um, we have our credit cards and nine-one-one surcharge claim. So first one, I'll hand, or I'll give you the nine-one-one surcharge collection payable to the city of Watertown will take action on this separately since Troy has to recuse himself from this. Uh, nine-one-one surcharge collections for the month of March for twenty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents. We've received that money from the state of South Dakota and we need to remit it to the Watertown City Finance Office.
Make a motion to.
Motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
And then we have our Visa Reliabank credit card payments that are made through, um, ACH at the end of the month. First one is to Visa Reliabank, four hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents. And that includes, um, the annual Zoom fee for the commissioner's office. It includes the election supplies and it includes a computer, partial payment for a computer for the coroner's office. The second one, second claim is one thousand ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents to Visa Reliabank for the coroner. For, um, the other half of his, when he, when he tried to purchase his computer, his credit limit was not high enough. So he had to use part of one card and part of another to purchase this computer. And that's a thousand dollars, ninety, one thousand ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. And the final one is Visa Reliabank for the detention center for miscellaneous supplies, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-eight cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, yeah, by Gable. Second.
Second.
By Van Duzen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, item number twenty-one, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
I have nothing for twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two.
Okay, item number twenty-three, then, action to approve travel requests. We have one of those that I'm aware of.
Oh, that's the only I have, uh, for the weed department to attend a spring weed I C tournament.
Uh, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any other comments, questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public notices.
Possible corner of questioners. What do we have?
Yes, sure, the first week in May.
Congratulations.
We've got Memorial Day services coming up.
That's about all that I can think of as well. And we do not meet next week, so I guess we got two weeks left.
Could be a Republican except for the board meeting that first Wednesday in June.
That, I can't think of anything. Um, old business, is there any? New business?
Just, um, on the discussion of, uh, we've been, with the summer studies that most people know that I've been, the guy working on this, uh, you know, looking for other ways to fund county buildings, especially jails, with something other than property tax. That and, and probably some other things going on at this, you know, in different counties across the state. Because there's two, there's a task, a summer legislative task force on funding incarceration infrastructure. And then there's another one on regional jails. And so, um, I've been asked to testify with a commissioner, we see from Brown County as well as STACC, um, for the, uh, the regional jails one. So that's coming, that's the ninth of June, I think it's the first, first meeting, so that's just FYI. So I'm working with Commissioner Wisi on that one.
Um, I'd also mention, if you have a resolution that you would like to be brought before the county question convention in September, those are due by July thirty-first. We'll have our meeting, next meeting in August. I think that's the most important thing, um, that I have to report.
So that would mean, so that when's the next, um, Sioux Valley meeting, if we did have something?
Might be in, is that in August, I think?
So that, so it'd have.
It'll be after.
So it'd be at the county level that we would do a resolution.
Yeah. Okay, how about, Troy, do you want to mention anything? There was a nine-one-one advisory board meeting. Do you want to report anything?
Uh, no, we just had a nine-one-one advisory board meeting. It was well-attended and, um, yeah, I guess I really don't have much to add. We covered, uh, the severe weather and everything that happened, uh, but, uh, counties represented well at the meeting and it's good.
Yes, if anyone wants any part of this packet, I can scan an email or Troy can, if any of you want any of the information from the nine-one-one board meeting. So just let us know, get you that information. Um, do we have a need to go in an executive session? Okay, look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Johnson, second by Gable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, that motion carries.